And members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you to join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda this evening is audience comments, and members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, this would be pressing star three. And if you are joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This can vary by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Nicoletta Juan.
Who is in the room with us? Hi, Nicoletta.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nicoletta Mokano. I will be joining, hopefully, the UVC Commission as an alternate member for the next two years. I'm a software engineer and a mom of a 14-year-old daughter and a one-and-a-half-years cat. And thank you for having me tonight, and I hope I'll do great to the expectation in the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicola. Thank you for coming and introducing yourself to the council. City Clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak this evening?
No one else has signed up, and we do not have any members of the public on the virtual meeting tonight.
Anyone else wanting to speak this evening? It sounds like we are done. Well, again, Nicoletta, thank you. It's always nice to put a face to the name. So we're going to move on to committee and regional reports, and we'll be starting with Councilmember Joe.
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember De Michele?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. First, at the April 7th Healthier Here Governing Board meeting, we received a first report on equity metrics for Medicaid transformation in King County. The results were mixed, but it was very difficult to know how to take into account the amount of disruption caused by the pandemic on the outcomes. But at least we have a floor level now, and we'll be looking forward to the next report to see if we can discern trends better than the ones that we received this time. So at the April 8th Eastside Transportation Partnership, we received a report from Metro on the new Orca card, which will begin to be rolled out in May, and a report from Sound Transit on the I-405 stride bus rapid transit plans. And then I also attended the Eastside Human Services Forum Board meeting on April 14th, which included a time for sharing human services news with other eastside cities, school districts, and social service agencies. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. Next is Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Regional Water Quality Committee met on April 6th. We spent most of the meeting discussing the wastewater treatments division's percent rate increase proposal for 2023. The percent that is proposed is 5.75%. So this would be for the sewer and wastewater King County portion of that fee. And we discussed that this was larger than the 2023 rates that was forecasted just eight months ago by this division, which was 4%. And we're also, as a committee, expressed a lot of concern about the 10-year plan, which actually has a doubling of the regional monthly rate by 2023. Sorry, it has a doubling of the regional monthly rate over 10 years. So there's a lot of assumptions that we're working on understanding. This committee will continue to work on that 10-year plan and really understand and dig into where there could be potential cost savings, what the drivers of those cost increases are expected to be, and if there's alternatives. So I will continue to update this group on those conversations. In the near term, the one-year rate increase is going to be transmitted in mid-April to the executive, and then it's ultimately voted on by the county, and it needs to go into effect by July 1st. The next meeting of this committee is May 4th. And then the King Conservation District Advisory Committee met on April 12th, and a subset of us also met today to discuss member jurisdiction grants. The main thing that this committee is working on right now is revisions to the member jurisdiction grant process for the King Conservation District Advisory Committee. And the main points that we are working on specifically are how to best include considerations of equity into this grant process. We are potentially proposing doing something similar to what Seattle does, which is they open up their grants for community and nonprofit organizations to apply to those grants. So it gives more different community groups an opportunity to do this conservation work and use the funding from the Conservation District in that way. So this would potentially be an option for cities, and if we finalize results to that effect, it would be a big change for cities that do use these grants. So we would bring it forward to pick at a subsequent meeting for more input from more cities. And so the next meeting of the King Conservation District is, the next meeting of the King Conservation District Advisory Committee is June 14th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Two reports today. First one, the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met on April 14th at Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters on Newport Way. Quite a bit of discussion around PFOS. Eastside Fire and Rescue has received a $350,000 grant from the Department of Ecology to work on PFOS testing. And this is in addition to the $400,000 in PFOS funding that was secured by the city of Issaquah. Way to go, Issaquah. Also, PFOS is going to be designated as a Model Toxic Control Act substance, which is going to make it a little more difficult to get easy grant funding. But the Eastside Fire and Rescue is pursuing a grant for $2.4 million. That will require a 50% match, so that will be in our 2023-2024 budget. And also, this was just interesting. Semami, Semami Plateau Water has received a $1.5 million federal funding towards treatment of PFOS. Thank you, Representative Kim Schreier, for making that happen. Also, for regular business, Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors approved expending of EMS levy funds to implement and continue funding of the Mobile Integrated Healthcare Plan, which is the providing of social workers to augment the service provided by our first responders. And also, Eastside is working with Woodinville Fire right now to put together a training facility out in Woodinville that will augment our training capability. So that's very exciting. Then I'm just going to mention, because it's been in the news, but Eastside Fire and Rescue had a vaccine mandate, and that went into effect six months ago when the vaccines became available. There was a fair amount of public comment related to the vaccine mandate, and there were six Eastside Fire and Rescue employees who opted not to be vaccinated, whose six-month leave of absence ended today and consequently were terminated. It was a, it was a difficult and sad meeting for all of us. Onto a happier topic. The Issaquah City Council Ad-Hoc Committee on Rules met on March 30th and again on April 6th to develop the revised rules of procedure to implement council committees. And we will be talking about that later today, and I will give more detail at that time. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Marts?
Sorry, that's loud. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board, more lovingly known as the PSRC GMPB, met on Thursday, April 7th from 10 till noon. Many things were discussed, but we recommended approval of the Bothell Canyon Park Regional Growth Center Subarea Plan, as well as the Snohomish County-wide planning policies, none of which directly involve the city of Issaquah, but were fun topics nonetheless. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on Wednesday, April 13th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. There was a discussion of affordable housing countywide policies. There was a discussion on hazardous waste management coordination. Several conversations on local actions on climate change, where, you know, Issaquah's got a number of initiatives, both in collaboration with other cities on the east side, as well as some of the things that we're doing ourselves that were very exciting to share. And, but no, no specific actions came out of either of those meetings that need direct review by us. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Deputy Council President Hall?
No report this evening.
Thank you, Council President Walsh.
Thank you. The King County Affordable Housing Committee met on April 8th, where we focused on providing guidance on the accountability framework for those countywide planning policies. And so basically, as the cities come together and have to do our comprehensive plans, there are several elements in there. You know, there's a transportation element and a housing element and all of that. And this is looking at whether we want to strengthen the housing element, or rather, the PSRC GMPB said, hey, we want to strengthen that Affordable Housing Committee, figure out how we're going to strengthen it. And so the two things that we looked at and were planning to, or were giving feedback on, was first, whether to have a requirement that city's comprehensive plan housing element gets certified before it can be accepted. There are other areas that do get certified, such as the transportation element, because there's a lot of funding that is associated with that. The SCA Caucus wasn't in favor of having a certification requirement this cycle, because we feel like it's coming up really fast, and we needed more clarification on what the, the metrics would be that we would be looking at. But we were in favor of a mid-cycle review point of the 10-year comprehensive plan, so coming in at a five-year point, that would require cities to make adjustments if they're not actually delivering on the goals, the number of housing units that they said they would be able to. And so that's a departure from what any of this was before. This was feedback given to staff, which will then generate a proposal, which we'll continue to work on, which will end up going to PSRC GMPB for approval. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. Next item on the agenda this evening is the mayor's report. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending or potential litigation per RCW 42.30, 0.110 per N1 per NI. And the, these items are expected to take approximately 15 minutes, and no action is anticipated to follow an open session. The city of Issaquah celebrates and protects its natural environment, especially the trees and forests that make our city so beautiful. This year, the city of Issaquah earned recognition as a 2021 Tree City USA. The 29th year we've received this distinction. In recognition, I have signed a proclamation declaring Sunday, April 24th Arbor Day. The city is holding a joint Earth Day Arbor Day event on April 24th from 9:00 till 12:00 p.m. at Harvey Manning Park to plant native species and remove weeds. And you can learn more about this and register through the city's website. The city of Issaquah has been selected as one of 15 cities that will commence certification in a national cohort supported by the LEED for Cities Local Government Leadership Program. This program will allow Issaquah to track performance and identify gaps in sustainability and equity in order to achieve a LEED for city certification. This effort will require cross-departmental coordination. U.S. Green Building Council will provide dedicated staff and an equity fellow to support the city through the six-to-nine-month process. Youth Advisory Board recruitment is going on. We are calling all of our future leaders to come join. The city of Issaquah is now accepting applications for the Youth Advisory Board for the 2022-2023 school year. Youth's grade 5 to 11, who live or attend school within the Issaquah School District, are encouraged to apply. Applications and reference forms are due by email on May 13th, and more information can be found on the city's website. We have some upcoming community events. Keep Issaquah Beautiful Day. Join us on Saturday, April 23rd, as we work to keep our favorite town clean and beautiful. Rain or shine, volunteers will help pick up trash, maintain vegetation, and plant flowers. Afterwards, participants can enjoy live music and pizza at the Historic Shell Station. Learn more on the Downtown Issaquah Association's website. There's also a farm fresh market. The Downtown Issaquah Association is hosting a market with seasonal flowers and foods at the Historic Shell Station. The event will run Saturdays from April 30th through April 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And Eastside Fire and Rescue is having an open house, as they are continuing with their strategic planning process. They're hosting in-person meetings to facilitate conversations and engagement with the fire department. The open house will be April 27th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Eastside Fire and Rescue Station 78. More engagement opportunities are available online. Chamber Regional Business Summit. Eastside Chamber of Commerce is hosting the Fourth Annual Regional Business Summit at the Club at Snohomie Ridge. This one-day event is open to all business professionals. The event explores how the challenges, disruptions, and opportunities accelerated by the pandemic are creating a new economic era for eastside businesses. Tickets are available for purchase through the Chamber's website. And just a final note, City Hall is currently open to the public Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that concludes the mayor's report. Next item is the consent calendar, which was distributed to council in advance. And if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing none, is there someone prepared to make a motion? Council President?
I move we approve the consent calendar as written.
Deputy Council President?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none, the motion before council, approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. As I mentioned during the committee reports, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Council Rules met on March 30th and again on April 6th. We walked through a series of opportunities to amend the rules of procedure, to re-implement the legacy, or the legacy idea of council committees. We also took advantage of this time to look for opportunities to improve the ways committees function and to streamline the timeline. And we also identified some areas where we could align the committees to the strategic plan. And then, just because we could, we eliminated some clunky language that was currently, clunky is a technical term, that was in the, the existing rules of procedure. Councilmembers Marts and Hunt and I made up the committee. I have nothing but praise and thanks to the, the city clerk and the city clerk's office for the way they organized the discussion and enabled us to move through this material very, very quickly. And I, I think we have a, a, a good body of work to put before you this, this evening. So I'm going to turn it over to the city clerk to walk through the changes. But before I do that, I was going to see if Councilmember Hunt or Marts had anything that they would like to add. Nope? Okay. I'm going to turn it over to the city clerk.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Chair Ray. Let me get this going here. All right, so I'm just going to provide a brief overview of the committee's recommendation, expanding on a few points that Chair Ray mentioned. So obviously, our purpose tonight is to summarize the council rules ad hoc committee's recommendation. And just to note that upon conclusion of my presentation tonight, the committee will have finalized its work, and so it will be dissolved or discharged after the presentation tonight. So the committee recommended the revisions to the rules of procedure. They're shown and tracked changes and attached to a resolution that would adopt them. There's also an ordinance, which just makes some conforming amendments to the Issaquah Municipal Code. There's just a high level of information about the council's legislative structure in the IMC. So as some background, the council's been discussing its legislative structure really since the start of 2022. So there was some robust discussion at the January 25th council retreat, and then at the February 15th and March 1st study sessions, the council really laid out some, some concrete changes. And then on March 7th, the rule, Council Rules Ad Hoc was established to sort of determine some of the function and form of the standing committee structure and committee of the whole. So this slide is just an overview of the direction that was provided at the two study sessions. And so this is what guided the ad hoc committee's work. So the transition to written informational updates on the consent calendar, the quarterly community listening sessions. There's a minimal section in the council rules to address both of those. One of the biggest ones was the shift to standing committees. We'll talk a little bit more about that. And then as well, establishing a new section on committee of the whole council. And lastly, providing some changes to the, the section on ad hoc committees. So the direction was continue to allow them to be created, but provide some more structure and expanded format options. So with this in mind, as Chair Ray mentioned, the committee met twice. Once to go through about 13 questions that provided specific direction on different provisions of the committees and committee of the whole and a few other changes. And then at April 6th, they reviewed the draft rules before each night and made some edits. This slide should be familiar to you. This was the committee structure that the, the full council landed on at the study sessions. Something the ad hoc committee solidified was the name for that third committee, Services, Safety, and Parks. But otherwise, this, this should look familiar to you, and you will see this table reflected in the draft council rules. The ad hoc committee did weigh in on the schedule for these standing committee meetings, settling on the first, second, and third Tuesday of the month at 6:30 p.m. These committee meetings will be held in the council chambers, and committee members would be seated at the dais. I wanted to mention that because occasionally holidays move these regular council meetings to Tuesdays, occasionally these committee meetings will occur on a Wednesday. That will be the default date, but a different date can be determined by the committee if needed. I wanted to make note of sort of an addendum to the motion in your packet tonight. I discovered in preparing for tonight's meeting that I had a typo that misconstrued the regular meeting date of the committees. So Councilmember Ray will be including that in his motion to correct it with all the other communication you've received about the proposed schedule. All right, so I'm going to provide an overview of some of the specific recommendations on the standing committees. So the ad hoc committee recommended that public comment be taken and that it be taken at the beginning of the committee meeting and after each agenda item, similar to how public comment was taken during study sessions. As a side note, this does trigger the Open Public Meetings Act, so that will apply to meetings of the committee. The committees will, as you know, consist of three council members, so a quorum would be two council members. There will not be substitutes or alternates allowed. The other council members are encouraged, if you have interest in the committee's proceedings, to watch the, the video of the meetings or to pose questions to the chair or other committee members at an open public meeting. And certainly, the committee members are encouraged to avoid dialoguing on items coming to the committee or to come to the committee in the future, to just ensure you're complying with the Open Public Meetings Act. So the other thing the ad hoc committee touched on or made a recommendation on were committee appointments. You are all familiar with some of those recommendations as you were surveyed a few weeks ago. So those included council leadership would not serve as a chair. Chairs of the committee would not serve on more than one committee. The ad hoc committee also came up with a process for unclear referrals. As you recall, the Work Cities Work Plan items will come directly to a standing committee or committee of the whole based on the subject. If a council member feels that one of those referrals is not appropriate, they can pose that to the council president, who will serve to, I guess, review the rationale for the referral and can choose to make a different decision. So there's some language to address that in the draft rules. There's also some language about reporting. As when committees existed previously with the council, the council chair is sort of the default report outer. And they would make the report summarizing the committee's recommendations under committee reports. If there's a regular business item that the committee weighed in on, they would hold that recommendation, just like council member rated tonight, and they would address the council immediately after the staff presentation to provide the committee's recommendation verbally prior to council deliberation. The ad hoc committee also recommended allowances to discharge items from committee or refer items back to committee. So discharging. That would allow, the rationale there is that the full council should be able to pull an item out of committee. Maybe it's languishing there. Maybe it's head for committee meetings. So there's some language in the draft rules that allows some mechanisms for doing that. And certainly, if you have any questions about those, essentially, the ad hoc committee settled on providing advance notice at a prior meeting of intention to make such a motion. I'd also like to quickly touch on board and commission involvement. So the council had, had discussed at the study sessions an interest in tying the committees to their respective boarding commissions, and you'll see that in the chart, the table that I showed previously. The ad hoc committee talked about this, and committee members may want to add further, and felt that it was important to hear from the boarding commissions on items coming before the committees for action. And as has been occurring at some of the regular council meetings and study sessions, the recommendation was to ask the, direct the administration to strongly urge that a representative of the board commission come to the committee meeting and summarize the board and commission's recommendation. There, the committee felt that with the acknowledgement of the administration, who was attending the ad hoc committee meetings, that that, that direction was, was clear and received and, and could proceed administratively. And so there isn't language in the council rules as written to address this dynamic. Also, the ad hoc committee felt it was important to revisit this once the standing committees were functioning for a while, potentially at the beginning of 2023. I'd like to provide a brief overview of the decisions related to the committee of the whole council. So the ad hoc committee recommended the council president chair those meetings, that the public provide comment at the beginning of the meetings and after each agenda item. And in the case of the standing committee and the committee of the whole, that the public be able to make comments virtually or in person. And they also recommended having a standing good of the order at the end of the agenda, similar to how study sessions functioned previously. There are a few other recommendations. One of them was regarding the weekly leadership meetings. So at the council retreat, there was some discussion around the rotating third council member that currently is invited to attend the weekly leadership meetings. There wasn't a, an ultimate recommendation that came from that. And so that question was posed to the ad hoc committee, which recommended removing that third, rotating third council member. And then the committee also reviewed some changes to the ad hoc committee provisions that, as I mentioned before, provided, sort of require more specificity when they're established, and some identifying timeline check-ins, as well as identifying a format. So just provided some more guidance when those are formed in the future. Then you'll notice a variety of amendments to conform to the changes I just referenced throughout the rules. There are a few other amendments. The clerk's office keeps a list of minor things that need to be updated in the rules. And so there were a few minor changes in the sections identified on the screen here. So timing and next steps. Tonight, we and the committee are looking for your approval of the draft rules or potential changes. And the shift to standing committees and committee of the whole council would begin in May. So here is the recommendation. I'm happy to help answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. Are there any questions? Deputy Council President Hall?
Really quickly, and again, thank you very much for all the work that you put into this. It's clear to me that you spend a lot of time and passion in this. Did you say, so going back to some things that kind of at the beginning, you know, I was thinking, wanting to follow along the committees, the committees that I'm not serving on, would it be appropriate to go to those in person? Or are you advising that council members just watch those virtually? members just watch those virtually?
I would, I would recommend that you view, view the committee meetings. And certainly, if, if Rachel has anything to add, the, the committee meetings are noticed open meetings, but they're open meetings of the committee. And so you bring in four council members, it becomes, under the OPMA, it could, you have a quorum of the city councils. So the recommendation would be to passively view.
Did you want Rachel to comment on that?
No, that's fine. That makes perfect sense. I wasn't sure if they were noticed differently in some way, so that answered my question perfectly. There were two other questions that I had sent in advance that council member Ray answered via email. Thank you very much for doing that. One of them was, what happens if a chair can't attend a committee meeting? So could you speak to that?
Absolutely. So Roberts' rules says that if there's not a vice chair, which there is not with the committees, that it would just be up to the, the committee to elect a chair, which is a little funny because if you're missing your chair, there's two of you. So I guess you have to agree. And I was thinking about your question. It's something, if it becomes problematic, it's certainly something that could be outlined in the rules, some kind of process, but really just be agreement among the two remaining members, how to handle that. And on that topic, you will have noticed that there, the section on remote attendance, so during emergency, council members can attend meetings remotely, including committee meetings. But the remote attendance section was amended to specify that if the chair is virtual, the chairing of the meeting would fall to an in-person committee member. So just mentioning that as well for awareness.
Great. Any other questions?
I have one more, if that's okay. Just so that way the public has all the questions that I sent in advance. The other one was, or my last question was that one of the recommendations for chair responsibilities was reviewing and approving committee agendas. Could you speak to what that means in particular?
Sure. So we plan to track items going to committee similar to agenda bills now. So you'll receive, the council will receive the weekly plan and calendar so that you, everyone can see what's anticipated to be scheduled for upcoming committee meetings. So that agenda review will be similar to what council leadership does with, in the past, study session agendas, where the clerk's office will prepare the draft agenda and the committee, send it to the committee chair. They would review it primarily for timing and order, moving items, maybe saying that they think it's a bit of a robust agenda or the timing isn't realistic, those types of things. So that, that is what, what is intended by approval of the agenda. And then it would proceed to be published following their review and approval.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Councilmember Joe.
Thank you for this presentation. I appreciate putting it in concise terms that are easy to understand. I wanted to go to the page in your presentation, meeting schedules and locations. I think it's page five or six. In there, it has that the first Tuesday of the month will be Planning, Development and Environment Committee. But then on page 45 of the statute itself, it's at the beginning of the presentation, the, the dates are transposed are a little bit different. Page 45 under meetings, it's got mobility and infrastructure is the first Tuesday of the month. Plan, Development, Environment is the second Tuesday of the month. Did we?
I made a mistake.
Oh, okay.
And I, I, I caught my mistake today and I provided council member Ray a slightly revised motion to make tonight to, to correct that. No, thank, thank you. Thank you for seeing.
I didn't see the recommendations, so I, I apologize if you had.
No, you, you were not provided that information. So thank you for your close reading and that, that will be hopefully corrected as part of the motion tonight.
Okay.
That's great.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Always helps to have a second set of eyes. Any other questions? I do have one follow-up question based on something county, deputy council president said. Under OPMA, if a council member who's not on a committee gets a call from a resident, there, there is nothing in OPA that bars them from talking to a resident. It only bars them from talking to the three on the committee. And if a council member is, and the city clerk is, if you're not here, nodding her head. And the second piece to that was that if a council member is, has read a packet and has passively watched and would like to reach out to a staff member, that's permitted under OPMA. They just cannot reach out to each other. Okay. Just want to make sure that's clear because we have a lot of council members who are actively interested in committee work that they may not be participating in. Okay, that's great. Deputy Council President?
Thank you very much. Then clarification on that. So is it, does it count as a communication with a council member if ahead of a committee meeting, a non-committee member had questions about an agenda item on that agenda? Would it be inappropriate to send those questions to the chair to address at the meeting? Or would that be better served by emailing staff directly? Or should we not do anything?
No, I might phone a friend here. My, my feeling is if it was before the meeting and if it was providing questions for them to possibly consider that it, that the chair would then be bringing up at the meeting, that that would probably be appropriate. After the fact, you wouldn't want to phone him up and say, so how'd it really go? You'd want to wait until you were up here and, and say, so how did it go? So, yeah. And just an administrative side note on that as well. In order for staff to be able to help at the meeting, it'd be good to have the staff liaisons uncopied as well. So both chair and staff would know. That would be great. And that's not OPMA, that's just helping staff. That is great. Well, thank you very much. Is there any additional questions or are we ready for a motion?
Actually, I do have a question and I actually know the answer, but I'm going to, going to ask it for everyone else. Since you brought up staff liaisons, who are going to be the committee staff liaisons?
I'm going to call a friend. Administrator Bob Quetz.
Mayor members of the council, good evening. I will staff the Safety Services Parks group and the Land Use and Environment. And the deputy city administrator Schneider will staff the Infrastructure and Transportation group.
Thank you. Any other questions? Here to make a motion?
I'd like to move to approve resolution number? Amending the city council rules of procedure to amend various sections as recommended by the city, or the council rules of procedure ad hoc committee, including removing study sessions, adding new sections on committees of the whole and standing committees, and including an amendment to section 6.01, open parent C, closed parent, to reflect that mobility and infrastructure committee will meet on the second Tuesday of each month and that the Planning, Development and Environment Committee will meet on the first Tuesday of each month and adopting ordinance number?
2972.
Amending chapter 2.06 of the Esquimuniscible Code, council meetings to reflect the termination of study sessions and the establishment of council committees of the whole and standing committees.
Sir, second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember DeMichele, and then, did I see another one go up? Oh, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember DeMichele followed by Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I have two amendments I'd like to offer, and I'll start with, with the short one first. I would like to move that, excuse me, I'm going to grab my, first of all, let me thank Chief Geezer for all of her help. It was immense today. So I would like to move that the, we amend subsection 6.01B of the council rules of procedure to strike quote or refer unquote.
And I think I might have that emailed. Is there a second?
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Great. It's been moved and seconded. And Councilmember DeMichele, can I get you to read that one more time, please?
Did I say that wrong? Because I'm getting looks from the other council members.
No, I just want to, I'm just want to make sure it's clear, they know what they're talking about.
Oh, okay. I move to amend subsection 6.01B of the council rules of procedure to strike quote or re-refer unquote.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes. First of all, thanks to the ad hoc committee for all of the hard work and, and really good work, and I appreciate that. And I totally agree that the city council may choose to refer items to the standing committees by majority vote. I have no problem with that wording, but the section there, the or re-refer kind of leapt out at me. When we discussed how we wanted to return to council standing committees, but we wanted to be sure that we didn't repeat some of the mistakes of the past, we talked about avoiding council, I think it was called council ping pong, which is when you send something to committee and then it comes back to the council and then it goes back to the committee. And I think there was a fairly clear agreement that that kind of action is, leaves the public unclear about how there is a path to a decision. And it, it just, I think is a, a way of obfuscating the purpose of whatever item is under discussion. So I would rather that we not allow re-referrals, that we, if in fact we feel like a council committee has not answered all the questions or the response or the, the results are unsatisfactory or they're unclear, that we hash it out as a council of the whole. And we put up a guardrail about future council ping pong. So that is the reason I would like to strike the phrase quote or re-refer unquote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilman, deputy council president, council member Ray has indicated, decided to speak. You had seconded it for discussion, but I'm going to hand it over to him. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Great point, great argument. We had the same discussion. The, the, the sticking point was to send a item to the committee of the whole is actually a committee re-referral. So if something was in committee, came back from committee and it wasn't satisfactory, it would be a re-referral of that item to go to the cow or the committee of the whole. And I'm going to look to the city clerk to make sure that that is correct. Because that's my recollection of the discussion we had.
And this, the section that councilmember DeMichele is proposing to amend is in the section on standing committees. So I'm not sure that it would have bearing in this location on the committee of the whole. So let me take a look and see if there's another provision related to the committee of the whole. And while the city clerk is doing that, if anyone else has questions, let's get them on the table. And also thoughts on hashing it out at a regular business meeting versus hashing it out at committee of the whole? Any thoughts? Councilmember Hunt?
I, I think that with, even with it, with the or re-refer removed, it still says the city council may choose to refer any items to the standing committees by a majority vote. I think procedurally, we would still be able to refer an item to committee even if it had already been at that committee. However, I take the point that we shouldn't just make that a usual thing that we do and that is definitely, we do definitely want to avoid the ping pong issue. But I think, you know, if there were extraordinary circumstances, we could still refer an item to a committee. We just generally need to be conscious of, of making sure that items get decided on ultimately by the whole council because that's where the ultimate decision gets made.
Any other comments or discussion? Councilmember Ray?
I just wanted to also say one thing that we did talk about and rejected was referral to another committee. So I mean, so there's no kind of shopping for committee, I think was what council member Marge referred to it as. So we did look at that idea and rejected that, and I'm going to yield to the clerk, who I think has the answer.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Yeah, so there's a similar statement under section five, which pertains to committee of the whole, which says that, the same language, the city council may choose to refer, re-refer any items to the committee of the whole by a majority vote at a regular or special council meeting. So amend, this specific amendment would address the standing committee re-referral, but not the committee of the whole. And I, I do, I do think the language, so the committee, the city council isn't technically referring the items to the committees initially because they're sort of this automated process. So I do think if the intention is to not refer at all, it might, the amendment may need to be expounded on.
More discussion or questions?
Well, just to be clear, I, I do think the city council could choose to refer. It's the re-refer that is bothering me, just because it seems to imply that situation where it goes to a standing committee, back to the council, then back to the standing committee. And I don't think, I don't see that anything has gained from that kind of a process, so.
Thank you. I think the city clerk is saying that even with the language proposed, the council could still send it to a committee again. So it could go to the committee through the new process that you created, and then the council could still send it even back with this change. So I'm not sure that it solves the problem that you were trying to solve. Any other discussion? Councilmember Hunt?
One more quick thing. So one of the things that we discussed in the ad hoc was that probably a lot of these rules, we have to work with them for a while, and then we may need to make adjustments, which we, as the council, can make at any time. So one of the, one of the core recommendations that we had outside of the things that actually changed in the rules was that council revisit the rules. I think we said around when the new, when people are appointed again at the new year. So I think for some things like this, I think, I think we may need to see if it's actually an issue. If it is, then I think we need to address it. But I think, I'm, I'm supportive of the change, but I generally think there may be some little words here or there that we may want to clarify and once we've worked with the code for a while, or worked with the rules rather, for a while.
Any additional discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the amended language that this, in section 6.01B of the council rules of procedure, strike in quotations or re-refer, so the amended language would read, "The city council may choose to refer any items to the standing committees by a majority vote at a regular or special council meeting." All those in, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Councilmember DeMichele, did you, you want to go through the second amendment?
The second amendment is lengthy, and so Clerk Geezer, I believe, is going to put the wording up so that you can all see it. I will move to amend subsection 6.01H and section 8.04, formerly section 7.04 of the council rules of procedure to incorporate provisions related to boards and commission recommendations as shown. And that wording should be on, it is up on the, up on the board.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Second, council president. It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember DeMichele, do you want to speak to the motion or the amendment?
Thank you. And I did read that the ad hoc committee recommended that this be reviewed again in January 2023. I just felt very strongly that we need to get these committees off on the right feet, on the right feet, right foot. And that I know that we all, you know, respect our boards and commissions and all the work that they do. We also have talked about having a clear commitment to not duplicating the work of our boards and commissions. And so I would think that we would want to set the parameters now and not wait until January 2023 and have some clear understandings about how we are going to interact with our boards and commissions. I like the wording, which did not end up in the, in the council rules about inviting a representative from a boards or a commission to a standing committee to interact with the standing committee on the items under discussion. I thought that was really important to be in our rules of procedure now and not wait until January 2023. until January 2023. I also thought that it was very important to include the wording, "A board or commission recommendation shall carry substantial weight during standing committee deliberations as provided for in section 8.04." Again, thanks Clerk Geiser for the exact right wording. Because again, we recognize the work and the amount of time, immense amount of time in some cases, that goes into the recommendations that come to us from boards and commissions. And I think that as a body, we want to recognize that by giving substantial consideration or substantial weight to the recommendations that come before us. That doesn't mean that we never disagree with a board or commission, but it does mean that we take it very, very seriously. And, and then finally, if there is a conflict with a recommendation from a board or commission, I just wanted to be sure that that matter is not referred to consent agenda, but instead again comes to either a committee of the whole or goes under regular business. So those are the things that I would like to see done now and not wait until January 2023 to have inserted so that as we move forward, we have some agreed upon parameters that all three of the standing committees understand and we're all operating the same way consistently with our boards and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. I'm going to go to council president who seconded first. I have a couple other speakers. Councilmember Marts, followed by Councilmember Hunt.
I have, I have concerns about the language on specifying whether something is going to go on consent or regular business. And the reason that I do is that these things are not typically an issue where we have choice A or choice B and we're coming out of committee or the, you know, a commission has said, "Let's choose path A" and the committee chooses path B. Typically, the way that a lot of these things work is, you know, there'll be a half dozen facets to it and we'll agree with four or five of the facets, but not agree on one or two of them. And I don't want to prescribe whether something is regular business or consent agenda in a situation like that where we've adopted substantially what's been recommended, but we were out at the outliers. So that's my concern with that language. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I had a similar concern and I think Councilmember Marts stated it very well. So specifically, I had a concern about the phrasing with the conflicts. And so it says if a standing committee makes a recommendation that conflicts with the recommendation of a board or commission. So one thing I was thinking about with this is not only are sometimes the recommendations of the commissions covering a lot of grounds and, and we doing our work may, may recommend some changes, you know, what then constitutes a conflict could be hard to, hard to say. I also don't think it, I think the framing of it as a conflict is also problematic to me because we could be building on their recommendation and it might be a change, but it's not necessarily a conflict in my mind. And then the, the last thing is we actually now have multiple boards and commissions that may look at different or maybe even the same elements of a item that comes before a committee. We've had this happen recently with things that have been looked at by both the Planning Policy Commission and the Environmental Board. So in that case, it may in fact be impossible to go with all of the recommendations from all of our committees, in which case, you know, I think our role as a council, these are the rules that we have for ourselves in part so that we know, you know, how to do our work at the committee level. And I think this, I, for me, I think we need to take the recommendations, we, we do, I believe, apply that substantial weight, we consider them, we potentially build on them, and we have the opportunity to watch the meetings of the committees in many cases. So we use those recommendations to build our own recommendation at the committee level. But I think this, the framing about whether or not it's a conflict for me is problematic, so I don't support that part of the amendment. The other, the other issue that I wanted to raise, that I have a concern about is that the wording, administration should relay an expectation that a member of the body, meaning the volunteer board or commission, be designated to provide a representation at the appropriate city council meeting. So my concern with this one, and actually, Councilmember DeMichele, in your explanation, you said invitation, which would be a different, with different wording. So my concern with the expectation is that these are our rules and this is an expectation that a, that we would then have on a volunteer committee member. It wouldn't be in their ordinance that establishes that committee and their responsibilities. So when they sign up, they wouldn't know that they would sometimes be designated to provide representation of the city council meeting. And also, I, I think it's great when we've had volunteer commissioners come to our meetings. And one of the things we discussed in our ad hoc committee is that we're seeing that more and more. We feel like it's going in the right direction and that the administration and the staff are encouraging, you know, when there is an issue that we feel it would be valuable to hear from a, from a commissioner. Commissioners have come to speak to us on those issues. So recently, we've heard from members of the Equity Board, for example, and the Capital Finance Task Force, and several committees or commissions and boards, actually. So that's been really great, but I, I do think that these are our rules and that's something that we, that the staff is encouraging. They, they verbally confirm that they will continue to encourage and invite those individuals from the committees when appropriate. So I think maybe having that clear on the record would be, would be, that would be adequate for me, but I don't support putting it in our rules. And I, and like I said, I don't think it is, I don't think it's an expectation because the volunteer commissioners are already giving up a lot of their time. I served on a volunteer commission before I was on council and it's a big commitment. So you, you sign up for, yeah. You sign up for, for a big commitment and it's a lot of work and it's great if, if a member of a committee wants to come and speak to us on an issue, but I, I don't want to make it an expectation.
Are there any other commenters? Any additional discussion? Okay, I will call for the vote. The amendment is up on the board for those who would like to read it. It is to amend subsection 6.01 per n h and section 8.04, formerly section 7.04 of the council rules of procedure to incorporate provisions related to boards and commission recommendations as shown on the screen. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I keep getting cut off when you guys are voting. The amendment fails. One in favor and six opposed. We are back to the main motion. Is there additional discussion on the main motion? Council president?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment in addition to the members of the ad hoc to thank the clerk. I've been on some of the rules of procedure meetings before and you always come fantastically well-prepared and I can see that in the documentation of this ad hoc. I think you've done a great job. It's lovely to have heard that many of the items that came up as questions or concerns were things that you had thought through. So in general, I think this is fantastic. I look forward to making these adjustments and I wanted to thank you all for your service and I will be supporting this tonight.
Councilmember Marts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually want to make a comment to the public, which is, you know, one of the things that holds promise with this, and we'll see how it works, is getting, you know, on the best days, the old committee structures had a more roll-up-our-sleeves type conversations with, with the public. So I'm hoping that this will encourage the public as issues come to the committees, that the public will be involved and that the public will see that there can be a little bit more of a give or take than there is in a, in a full seven-person council meeting. And so I think it, it really holds promise for even more engagement with the community, which is of course something that all of us think is really important, particularly coming out of COVID and re-engaging with the public on all these vital issues. So that's part of why I'm excited today and why I'm so enthusiastic to support this, this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. Any other speakers before I call for the vote? And I will reread the motion. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 2022-08, amending the city council rules of procedure to amend various sections as recommended by the council rules of procedures ad hoc committee, including removing study sessions and adding new sections on committee of the whole, committee of the whole council and standing committees, and including an amendment to section 6.01c to reflect that the mobility and infrastructure committee will meet on the second Tuesday of each month and the planning, development, and environment committee will meet on the first Tuesday of each month. And to adopt ordinance number 2972, amending chapter 2.06 of the Isqo municipal code council meeting to reflect the termination of study sessions and the establishment of council committee of the whole and standing committees. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries unanimously, seven and oh. A real compliment to all of you for working on this. Many cities have rules of procedure that they don't follow, that they don't use. And you've spent a lot of time trying to solve problems that can get in the way of great engagement and great work in committees. So thank you for that. That is great. The next item on our calendar this evening, under new business, is ID 1137, new business request, independent salary commission, and council compensation. And we will have Councilmember DeMichele introducing this one. So this is the first time we've had a new business request using the city council's new process, and I'd like to provide a quick overview. As provided for in the council rules, council members may request that a new work plan item be considered by the council. The first step is for the council member to submit an electronic form introducing their proposal. That form is included in the agenda materials. The council member then introduces the proposal verbally at a council meeting. This is the phase we are in for tonight's item. After the introduction phase, the council may choose to forward the item to the second phase by a majority vote. An item that moves to the second phase will be scheduled for the next council meeting. At the second meeting, staff will provide a preliminary response and the council will have the opportunity to formally add the item to the work plan. The second step can be waived for time-sensitive items if approved by a majority of the city council. Councilmember DeMichele, if you'd like to introduce your item.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. And I'm going to hold off on the motion until I've introduced it, if that's all right with you. First, and please forgive me, but I've written out my remarks tonight because I have a lot to say and I wanted to make sure I covered it all. So first, I want to acknowledge that this might be the most unpopular thing that I do during my time as a council member. So I embark on this quest, understanding that the community does not generally view council salaries as an important issue. However, tonight's discussion is limited to the question of whether or not we place my proposal on a future agenda for deliberation and vote. Second, I also want to acknowledge, as Mayor Pauli said, that this is the first test run of our council new business procedure. And so I'd like to have some time after we've had discussion and vote tonight to offer a few suggestions on improvements to the process. And third, there are some corrections that were kindly given to me by Tina Agers and Clerk Geiser, and so I would like to make those corrections before we begin. The first one in, is that the citation that is in the proposal is incorrect. I can, this is my numeric dyslexia. It is RCW 35.21.015. And it is important because our Isqo municipal code is built almost entirely from the wording in that RCW. Secondly, I stated that the independent salary commission would be looking at mayor and council salaries. If that is not correct, it would be just looking at council salaries. And then thirdly, I incorrectly, incorrectly stated that the salary issue is directly tied to the budget adoption process. It is not and it can occur at any time, although personally, I think starting the process now so it can be included in budget deliberations would be the best course forward. So I am asking the council to agree to place an ordinance directing the mayor to appoint an independent salary commission on a future council agenda for deliberation and a vote. When I filled out the new business form, I was not aware that the issue of elected official salaries was bubbling up as a national issue. I shared with you articles posted to the Seattle Times and the Isqo municipal patch, both from just in the past week, about salary issues at the Washington State Legislature and legislatures in Connecticut, Arizona, and elsewhere. Although those articles dealt with legislative salaries, the concerns raised in those articles are the same ones I bring to you tonight. When the council participated in equity training with Benita Horn in August of 2020, she requested that we look at everything we do and ask the question, "Who does this benefit and who does this harm?" It's a very simple, but I think extremely useful equity lens. In the case of council salaries, which are currently about 1,200 to 1,500 per month, it is clear that they benefit those who are well-off or independently wealthy or like myself, retired with a retirement income. And that means elected officials tend to skew older and predominantly white. Lower salaries harm those who are young, working in lower-paying jobs, and who are predominantly people of color. I'm happy that our council has good representation from both male and female members of the community, but often low salaries for elected officials work against women and particularly women of color. I'm personally saddened by the departure of Senator Mona Das from the state legislature, an accomplished woman of color who says that she cannot afford to continue in her position due to low salaries provided to state-elected officials. None of us can foresee the results of an independent salary commission. That's why it's called independent. So the commission could very well come back and say, "We're earning too much. We have no idea." However, I would like the commission to grapple with this issue through the equity lens provided by Benita Horn as we look to the future of our community. As our community becomes more and more diverse, will the council reflect the community and will it be inclusive of people from a variety of socio-economic backgrounds? And how do council salaries relate or not relate to those questions? One of the articles I sent you actually made the case that they don't relate. And so it's a question that needs to be looked at. So that concludes my thoughts on this issue. So I, I would like to ask if we have enough interest in this issue to place an ordinance on the May 2nd council meeting that would appoint an independent salary commission on a future agenda for consideration. And so now I'll make the motion to forward the independent salary commission, council compensation, new business item, to the May 2nd council meeting for preliminary staff response.
Is there a second? Deputy Council President?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. And thank you for the prepared comments. I'll go back to see if you want to add anything or just let the council ask questions or have discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion. Councilmember Ray?
I'm not, I'm not sure if this is appropriate now or is this is something for down the road? And I'm not, I'm actually very supportive of the idea of bringing this forward. I'm just struck with the 27th amendment to the U.S. Constitution that basically says you don't make any compensation changes until after the next election cycle. And that's, that's, I like this idea, but I think I would like it even more if it was something we were doing after the next election cycle. And, and to speak to your equity, I think, because I thought long and hard about that, that actually opens up some doors to people who might be interested in it in the next cycle and not the current cycle. So I don't know if that's a discussion for tonight or to, you know, the next time we bring it forward. I like the idea. I just, I just have that, that one caveat to it.
Okay. Councilmember Marts?
Thank you. Two things. First, I, I think by having an independent salary commission, it's, you don't run afoul of that issue. I believe the last time we did an independent salary commission, it did not have to wait until after the next election to. The second thing is, I have a question and it has to do with an independent commission. I guess, I guess it's a question for the administration or it's a question philosophically. Do we believe that a commission will, the last time we had one of these, the commission looked at things that were generally under the category of objective. How many hours spent on activities? And how did that compare with other municipalities? If we are to do this right and if we are to address the equity issues that you bring up, I'm just wondering if that can, is within the purview potentially of a salary commission? And if so, how that salary commission might be constituted? Just because it's a little bit different, it sounds like it would be a little bit different of a, of a- of a charge than the charge of the last time we had a salary commission. So I guess I'm asking you, Madam Mayor. Because it really, there's some questions there that are a little bit more subjective rather than objective.
How does the charge get made? I'm watching the city administrator and our legal counsel together talking about this. Are you able to talk about the charge to a salary commission?
Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Oops. If we can get the microphone working.
We're not prepared to speak to all the issues, and I think quite honestly, it's not germane to the motion.
Right.
Which is really for further consideration when we'll come back.
Yep.
The ability to answer.
Sounds great.
Okay. I guess then my statement would be, if this comes back, if the council moves forward with this, there will need to be a discussion of how these subjective issues get addressed, given that it's something new.
Correct. This is just a motion to look at it, and a motion to adopt it may answer a lot of your questions, and you may choose not to move forward. So more information required.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion before we vote on the motion? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, since this is the first time we're doing the process, this motion doesn't actually establish a, doesn't, it only indicates that we would like more information, basically, to consider it, and that staff will come back with more information. So I just wanted to clarify that for the public or anyone watching, you know, today, this is a first step that says we have questions like those that were raised, and staff will come back with more information if this motion were to pass, but it doesn't actually take the action of establishing a commission.
Thanks for that clarification. Any other comments before I call for the vote? Seeing none. It's been moved and seconded to forward the Independent Salary Commission Council Compensation New Business Item to the May 2 council meeting for a preliminary staff response. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously, seven and oh. Councilmember D. Michelle, you wanted to make some comments after the vote.
I did the same thing, sorry. Just two items as I was going through the process and filling out the form. First of all, very, very much appreciated the input from Chief of Staff and our city clerk. But I'm wondering if we could add a little time to the process so that the proposal, when it comes to the council, is factually correct, because there were errors in that. And so I would think that we would want to have the most factually correct item brought before the council. So just a time in there to be able to edit that and correct any errors of presentation. And then finally, and this is just the English teacher in me, but I just want you to know that when I put it into the form, it was very nice little paragraphs, and it was really formatted very nicely, and then I was a little chagrined to see the way it looked. So anyway, if we can extract the presentation from that form and put it into a nice professional-looking presentation, I think that would be an improvement. So those are my two comments on the process, and otherwise, the format was really very nice, and I thought the questions really got to the heart of the matter, and it was easy to fill out and easy to submit. So for a first time through, it worked really well. So thanks.
Thanks. So the next item, business tonight, is good of the order. Does anybody have something? Oh, Council President?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for good of the order, I just wanted to take a moment and, like I had emailed everyone earlier, to announce the committee membership and chairs. Since we adopted the ad hocs recommendations of changes to our council rules of procedure, now we have standing committees, and now we need committee members and chairs to go along with that. So for our three committees, we've got the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee, which we are calling PDE, which will be chaired by Councilmember Hunt, with members of Councilmember Ray and myself. For the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, which we are calling MIC, it will be chaired by Councilmember Joe, with members Councilmember D. Michelle and Deputy Council President Hall. And then Services, Safety, and Parks, which is SIP or SSP, is chaired by Councilmember Martz, with members Councilmember Ray and Councilmember D. Michelle. And as was noted in the earlier agenda mail, the committee schedules will be, PDE will meet on the first Tuesday of the month at 6:30 p.m., with the first meeting on May 3, and the next on June 7. MIC will be on the second Tuesday of the month at 6:30 p.m., with the first meeting on May 10, and next on June 14. And then SIP will be on the third Tuesday of the month at 6:30 p.m., with the first meeting on May 17, and the next on June 22. And that was my announcement.
Thank you. Councilmember Joe?
I would ask that we reconsider naming the committee MIC. It's a derogatory word for Irish people in the past, and I don't think that's the kind of impression we want to pass on to the public. So I'll just leave it to council leadership to decide on a more appropriate name, perhaps.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Any other comments or good of the order comments? Okay, I will go over a few dates for some upcoming meetings. April 26, council study session is anticipated to include on the agenda the solid waste contract, human services grants, and first-quarter reports. And May 2 council meeting, currently, there are no regular business items for that meeting planned as of today. So the next item of business tonight is our executive session. And as earlier announced, there will be an executive session held this evening to discuss pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .220, paren 1, paren I. The item is expected to take approximately 15 minutes, and no action is anticipated to follow in open session. So as a reminder, executive sessions are closed to the public, and we will now recess into the executive session at 8:17 p.m. For those participating virtually, and anyone who's not part of the closed session, will remain in the main meeting. And you are welcome to stay in the main meeting until it is reconvened. And City Clerk, are we ready to proceed into executive session?
Yes. And first, I'm going to ask our guests if they would mind walking out with me.
Nice to meet you, Nekeletha. Nice to see you, Julian.